Rome on your phone.
The City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City will meet in a regular council meeting in City Hall Council Chambers located 1716 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, October 25th at 6:30 PM. If you would please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord, thank you for the rain we've received this week and for continued rainfall to lessen the dangers of fire and to help fill our lakes. I also have a special request for Saturday to be a beautiful, cool, sunny day for my granddaughter's wedding. We pray for guidance in all matters at hand and ask for your help to show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us to work together to better our community we assist in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
For the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Row call from my left, please. Yaws here.
Evans here.
LaRue here.
Key here.
Foster here.
We have a quorum. Before we get started tonight, before we do the employee recognition, we here at City Hall have received numerous calls and I've received numerous personal emails wanting to know where to early vote. The closest place for us to early vote is the Lakeview Assembly of God Church, 700 East Cedar Creek Parkway in Seven Points. That's up and through the November 4th. Then also on the election day, you can vote anywhere as in Henderson County that is allowed to be voting and that would be the same church, Lakeview Assembly Church, Lakeview Assembly of God Church in Seven Points. But there's also places in Malakoff, Trinidad, or a number of places. I suggest everyone take a look at the monitor and they've been posting where you can vote at if you have any questions about that, or continue to call City Hall. Now we have a special presentation. I'm gonna come down front for just a moment.
[inaudible]
Proclamation I would like to read. the City of Gunbarrel City for 30 years. Whereas Assistant Chief Jason Randy, ladies and gentlemen, began serving the citizens of Gunbarrel City and the surrounding communities as a volunteer firefighter on November 2nd, 1992, and still remains a volunteer today 30 years later. And whereas Chief Randy has dedicated his life to the fire service and protection of life and property by fire and other emergency situations, and whereas Chief Randy answers over 100 calls a year and has been the top responder for the Gunbarrel City Fire Department multiple times throughout his tenure, and whereas Chief Randy's dedication, devotion, and volunteerism are shining examples of community service and services to others. Whereas the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City believes in fire and it is in the best interest of the city, its residents, and the residents of the surrounding communities to recognize, honor, and thank Chief Jason Randy for his 30 years of service, may I therefore be declaring that the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City with its residents express great appreciation, admiration, and gratitude for firefighter Chief Jason Randy for his 30 years of dedication to the community as a volunteer firefighter, and thank him for his tightest and tireless service. Amen.
[applause]
When you guys think of this for 30 years, just think of all the family outings, all the Sundays, birthdays, that this guy has missed throughout this time here with our city. I appreciate you.
[applause]
Counsel, fair, thank you guys for your time and patience.
Thank you, Chief Randy.
One of my first knowledges of Chief Randy fighting fire was we had four structures in Oak Harbor that were on fire. And I believe it was Chief Landman that told me about this, but Chief Randy was on hold by himself protecting the fifth house. He made determination that that house wasn't going to burn. It cost him his eyebrows. But he kept that house from burning in the instance that I, well, Chief Randy helped him, is that he early distressed all of our officers needing assistance with a gentleman that was speaking the crap out of two of them, took one of their body cameras off and beat him on the head, and he went to help assist with that along with my, uh, lieutenant, Brad, Brad, I'm sorry, I knew that wasn't right. And so, I mean, it's, these guys go out for whatever call they get and express gratitude enough for them. The young firefighters that we have, the new firefighters we have, the volunteers that we have, they take their lead from Chief Randy, and I just want to know how much the city appreciates you and all that you do and all the adventures you have taken over the years and all fires that you have involved. So, thank you very much. [applause]
Relax, sir.
You're welcome.
Peace, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys for your time.
I'm delighted.
Here's somebody's towel.
Thanks, Jason.
Chief Landman, is this yours?
It's his.
Was that yours?
Oh, it's his.
Thanks, Joey.
The purpose of the item, this is citizens' comments, purpose of the item is to allow citizens an opportunity to address the city council on items that are listed on the agenda or issues that are not listed on the agenda. Any person desiring to make a public comment must first sign in at the podium at least 10 minutes prior to the start of the meeting in order to be recognized by the presiding officer. Individual citizen comments are limited to three minutes. The presiding officer may ask the citizen to hold their comment on an agenda item until the agenda item is reached. The city council has no obligation to respond in any manner to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recital of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. I have one person that was then asked to speak and that will be on Item 2A and 2B. So, when we get there, Kristin, we'll get you in front of the microphone to answer the questions and make a statement that you'd like to make. Item 1, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports: 9/12/22 joint workshop minutes, 9/15/22 special meeting minutes, August financials, city manager report, code enforcement, court report, fire report, permits and inspections, streets and park maintenance, EDC September financials, EDC September minutes. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote from my left? Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Item 2A, discuss and/or take action to remove from the table Item 2A from the September 27th, 2022 meeting. Discuss and/or take action to consider an increase in animal control costs from $19,200 to $49,200 annually, as requested by the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. Second. Have a motion in a second. Vote from my left? Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Item 2B, discuss and/or take action to consider an increase in animal control costs from $19,200 to $49,200 annually, as requested by the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. Second. Motion in a second. Mr. City Manager.
We've been discussing in workshops as well as in several council meetings, the rate proposed by the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. I met with representatives of the Humane Society with Mayor Skanes where we proposed a counteroffer of a $10,000 increase to increase our contribution from $19,200 to $29,200. That proposal was made and that proposal was taken before their board and their board apparently unanimously denied that. So, the proposal we got from the Humane Society in August did not allow for negotiation. It was an unequivocal request for an increase and the email itself laid out that there would be no negotiations, that that was the cost necessary to keep the shelter open. We have had numerous discussions regarding the city's options as far as our animal control intake are concerned. We've been doing a pretty good job, the police department, our animal control officer has been attempting to place a lot of those animals herself. She's doing an admirable job of trying to identify the families of lost pets. She has really done an outstanding job of placing some of them and we've still been taking some animals to the Humane Society, but really on a limited basis. Our contract expires with them on the 1st of November, which is next week, and we have been unable to negotiate any terms other than the $49,200 demand. We did get a response back from Lynette Ainsworth, who is, I believe, the president of the Board of Directors, agreeing that we could pay $44,100 per month, which is $49,200 on a month-to-month basis, and that's really where we stand. We've discussed options. We really haven't moved forward with any of those options. We're really kind of at a position where we have to decide one way or the other. And I think Mayor Skanes, you have some, an email response from Ms. Ainsworth where that ship has sailed according to them and that we no longer have an option with them, that they have moved forward without our contractual obligations.
That is correct. Mr. Yaws, did you have something, you told me you had something you wanted to say or...
Yes, sir. I'd like to show a brief presentation regarding some of the steps that the city has taken and the community have taken in the interest of doing what's right for animals who are, honestly, for the most part, they're defenseless from the point of view that they depend on us as a community to do what's right. The Humane Society was founded on that premise. First thing I want to point out was Carol Jett, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, she's not feeling well, became our animal control officer earlier this year, and the first thing I want you to know is that everybody in the city seems to know her name. I can't go anywhere with somebody that doesn't know her and knows about the work that she's done. She's originally from Michigan, so I know a lot of folks are a little disappointed we didn't hire somebody from Texas, but I gotta tell you, if anyone from local could have done this job, I'd have hired them. But she was the right person and I believe the city did a great job, the city manager did a great job selecting her for this position. Some of the things that she's done for the community right off the bat, we now have a Facebook group just for the animal control department, and I want to show you a few examples of what she's done with that since she's been here. Just five days ago, she posted asking for help with a kitten who had been injured and soliciting any kind of assistance to try and help out with fostering this animal. Now, this may seem like a token effort because asking for help doesn't cost much. Let me show you what she's gotten help for in the past. Dogs like this right here looking for help, looking for new homes, and let's go on to the next screen. Here's some examples of where it's paid off, and this is what just keeps happening. Go to the next screen. Here we got Seamus. He was picked up, looking for a new home. They found his new forever home. This is working together. Here's Zeus, same story, looking for a forever home because of the actions of animal control here in Gunbarrel, working with the community. This is what keeps happening. This is community support. This is community involvement. Take it a step further, Gunbarrel City Council voted and approved funds to create the new dog park that we have up at Gunbarrel City Park. I gotta tell you, just want to show you a few pictures of it up here. This is a normal daily activity right there. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you ended up in the show right here. I don't know how that happened.
Oh, I did, didn't I?
And I will shamelessly tell you, my dogs are in there too, but I won't tell you which ones they are.
I would've wore a better shirt if I'd known I was gonna be in the movie here.
Yeah. But my point here is that this is another example of the community taking the control of the problem, and this is part of the reason why we've been so successful as a city and as a community with reducing the number of strays that had to go to the Humane Society, which I came on this council in 2019 and that was our very first real subject of discussion was how do we reduce that? Because at the end of the day, sending them there just to go through the motion of having the good people that the Humane Society have to take care of them is a sign that we failed at the earlier stages. And again, here's another example, a member of our community, I guess we've got a name for the park now. I don't know if we planned it that way, but it's now known as the Bark Park.
Correct.
And that's what one of the Nextdoor groups is calling it, which is another membership thing. Thank you to Mr. Kirksmith for taking the time to do that. I know he's out there all the time, too. But my point would be this, I'm gonna leave this one up there for a second. I'm gonna watch and see how many people scan this QR code. This is to join the Nextdoor group if you want to be in on the inside with the cool kids at the cool table in the lunchroom at the dog park. But my point is this, this is an example of what we wanted to have happen starting in 2019 from my point of view, and a lot of people on the council before this group was there were working on this as well. The point was to limit the number of animals that had to go to the Humane Society, that had to be picked up, that had to be taken care of in a way that we don't even want to talk about because it's just not what we want to see happen. At the end of the day, I'd like to say thank you to the members of the community that have taken the steps to do this. I really wish Carol was here. I'd like to say thank you to her and on the behalf of that city manager, if you would please pass my own personal thanks to Carol for all the work that she's done because I believe she's kind of taken that totem and runs with it for all of us to kind of set the tone on what responsible citizens in a community do. Next screen, real quick. We've seen what's happened in some other communities nearby and I'll kind of leave it at this. Sometimes when we're working together, I'm worried that we're not working together as well as we should, and that's where we come to the point of talking about the finances for this. We can go ahead and pull this screen down now. The points that I want to bring up, I don't want it to be said, and I'm absolutely certain that some people are gonna crawl behind their keyboards later on today and talk about how this council does not appreciate what is being done by others, that is not appreciative of volunteers, and that just don't care about animals. I've been hearing that since 2019, and if you want to see my angry face, this is it. I don't like hearing that kind of thing and I have the right to say it. The thing that does bother me is that when I first joined this council, we were paying $5,000 a year. Again, I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't know if that's enough or not enough, but the Humane Society presented it to us that it wasn't enough, so we started exploring other options, including a lot of what you just saw on that screen, which I believe is what responsible people do. At the same time, we did approve an increase to the Humane Society and we've continued to over the years, of course, with discussion because that's what people do, we discuss. I'm a little concerned with where we are now, that we're now up to 20,000 roughly and we're getting ready to go to 50. I'm a little concerned as I look through the city's budget and see that this is greater than an 800% increase since I've been on the council. I asked the city manager earlier today to help me out with something, is tell me anything that we've increased our budget by 800% in this city ever. And I gotta tell you, the closest things we could come to were, we have increased the city pay rate for all the city employees by approximately 25% over that time, which I think was appropriate because we were really underfunding for them, so we've taken steps to correct that. But just for clarity, that was a 25% increase. The healthcare, everybody's having to deal with healthcare. We've increased what we contribute toward employee healthcare for the employees of the city. That was a 20% increase. And we've also increased what we have to pay for the city's workers' comp and liability insurance by another 15%. So, paying more, we get it. It's part of life. It's part of business. I just have a hard time, Mr. Mayor, with 800% or greater than 800% increase. And I gotta tell you, I took it down to the next level and I said, I want to know what we're paying for that money. I still have a question that I've still never gotten an answer to, and I can't believe after all the discussion, and we still don't have a clear answer as to why we have cities within this community that are paying approximately $50 to $60 per animal that are being delivered by those cities to the same Humane Society that we take animals to, and a dog from Gunbarrel City, I had to look up the definition of premium service. Premium service means you're getting something greater than everybody else. I've checked into it, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we're getting anything extra when a dog is delivered from Gunbarrel City to the Humane Society than a dog from any other city around this lake. I am concerned that there's gotta be more to the story and I just don't know what that answer is yet of why, again, $50 to $60 average for animals from other community around the city, but if it comes from Gunbarrel City, it goes up to $250 an animal. I've asked this question, I've asked it the last budget, we never got an answer. I was told to go read somebody's P&L statement, I was told to go visit with somebody's accountant. I didn't ask for that. I asked for why does it cost so much more to handle a dog from Gunbarrel City to spay, neuter, and get his shots? Why does it cost so much more if an animal comes from this city? Because I gotta tell you, if I thought there was a way to save money, I'd start routing them through every other city and give them the money. But that's not the right thing to do either. So, with that, I'll defer back to the rest of the group to discuss further.
Thank you, sir. Ms., I'm sorry, Kirkland, thank you. Ms. Kirkland, would you go? I think we just started with the questions, so...
All right, I think so. I was writing just so I can make sure that I, especially with her trying to find the animals back to their rightful homes. So, that one is very well deserved. To address the $50 to $60, it's actually 95 for the smaller cities, but we are going back to those and increasing that to 150. So, that way it's more even and it's also, our cost per animal for a three to 10-day stay is approximately $175 per animal. So, I think that is a little bit of a corrections per animal. So, and even with the proposal for less than what it costs to take care of the animals.
How many animals are you calculating?
Approximately 300.
And why are you using that number?
So, if we look at the numbers from last year, you guys were at 321.
Let's look at the numbers from this year.
I am. Yep, yep, give me a second. So, you guys so far, and I'm gonna read my notes, so far you guys have brought in about 125 animals.
100, 99 animals so far.
125.
No, ma'am.
That is from intake reports.
That is not accurate.
So, how I also came up with that is that was also from May to the end of September.
Correct.
Because we did have the passing of the previous ACU.
That's correct.
So, between May and September with 125, that's five months. So, if we take that and divide 125 by five months, that's approximately 25 animals on average per month. So, if you take that, 25, and times it by 12, we're at about 300 animals.
But you're using incorrect data. We have taken 99 animals. We have also passed ordinances that we're not going to be taking cats.
Let me grab my phone and I can tell you per month, by cat and by dog.
I've already got that. I have that from my officer. She gave me that yesterday. I've got it in my phone as well.
Okay.
It's 99 animals.
So, even if you took the split, the difference...
So, and that's 200 if you double it, that's 200 animals and...
You'd have to double it plus add two months. Yeah, because we're working, the numbers that we have, that I've got right now is from May until end of September. Yep.
City Manager, you have something? Did I hear you say?
Only that we have done great efforts to reduce the number of animals by reducing cats as an at-large animal.
Yep.
In our discussions, we received absolutely no consideration for the fact that we paid the Humane Society for four months and didn't bring one animal to you, and I think that should have been considered, that we continue to provide because we were contractually obligated. I get that. If you, we were not even given an opportunity to negotiate that, like the city of Kaufman was, which is not even in our county, you negotiated your price with them and reduced it by over $10,000.
That's incorrect.
Well, close to $10,000 initially.
That's still not correct. But go on.
Ma'am, I spoke with the city manager and the assistant city manager of Kaufman today, and I have the actual numbers that they gave me, which the initial proposal was $58,000. The Humane Society was told that their city council would not approve anything with a "5" in front of it. You initially denied their proposal, and then ultimately the result was less than $50,000.
$49,999.
We were not even given the opportunity to negotiate.
Also, did he also tell you that we did that based on a month by month because we knew that we needed the response from Gunbarrel City to move forward? So, that's also in an email that you can, I'm sure he told you, that it's month by month and it's based on the decision on Gunbarrel City.
Regardless of the numbers...
It's not negotiation. I mean, you're saying that we negotiated for a year. We haven't. It's month by month at the reduced rate, which is just a few hundred dollars less per month than what we've said, and we've also made it contingent because it's based on GBC's decision.
And my only concern as the manager of this city is fairness. You receive a large amount of money from the county of Henderson to help supplement your budget. We have 6,500 residents in the city of Gunbarrel City that pay county taxes. We receive no benefit from that, but the residents of the city of Kaufman, which is in Kaufman County, were given a reduced rate. I just don't think that's fair, and I've had those discussions with you and your panel. All I'm asking for is a city manager's fair negotiations across the board cost.
So, let me, give me a chance to address that. So, first of all, Gunbarrel City citizens that are incorporated within the incorporated city do not pay taxes to Henderson County for animal control or for animal control services. So, there is no double taxation. So, I've also talked with Scott Thule, who's also confirmed that, that also, that with anything with Henderson County, it's separate. Henderson County, their taxes go specifically for their areas and unincorporated municipalities. Gunbarrel City is incorporated. Any city that is incorporated is responsible to pay and to service their city's animals, not Henderson County. So, they will not pick up animals within the Henderson, within the Gunbarrel City city limits or municipality. Talked to Sheriff Bodie Hillhouse. He's also confirmed that him and his deputies will not and cannot, per their city ordinances, Chapter 422 and 426, that they cannot come into Gunbarrel City Incorporated city limits and pick up animals, nor do any of those funds cross municipality lines. So, with that...
I understand that. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, do the county taxes specifically enumerate animal control services in the general fund collection of revenue from taxpayers?
No. So, any taxes with Gunbarrel City, if you're a citizen within Gunbarrel City, their taxes go to FMFC, which is the roads, the bridges, the farm roads, and the floodplains. There is no budget that's allocated for any Gunbarrel City citizen that is allocated for animal... We receive no benefit from that, but the residents of the city of Kaufman, which is in Kaufman County, were given a reduced rate. I just don't think that's fair, and I've had those discussions with you and your panel. All I'm asking for is a city manager's fair negotiations across the board cost.
So, let me, let me, give me a chance to address that. So, first of all, Gun Barrel City citizens that are incorporated, within the incorporated city, do not pay taxes to Henderson County for animal control or for animal control services. So, there is no double taxation. So, I've also talked with Scott Thule, who's also confirmed that, that also, that with anything with Henderson County, it's separate. Henderson County, their taxes go specifically for their areas and unincorporated municipalities. Gun Barrel City is incorporated. Any city that is incorporated is responsible to pay and to service their city's animals, not Henderson County. So, they will not pick up animals within the Henderson, within the Gun Barrel City city limits or municipality. Talked to Sheriff Bodie Hillhouse. He's also confirmed that him and his deputies will not and cannot, per their city ordinances, Chapter 422 and 426, that they cannot come into Gun Barrel City Incorporated city limits and pick up animals, nor do any of those funds cross municipality lines. So, with that...
I understand that. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, does the county taxes specifically enumerate animal control services in the general fund collection of revenue from taxpayers?
No. So, any taxes with Gun Barrel City, that if you're a citizen within Gun Barrel City, their taxes go to FMFC, which is the roads, the bridges, the farm roads, and the floodplains. There is no budget that's allocated for any Gun Barrel City citizen that is allocated for animal control or animal care services. Nothing. And to your second question about Henderson County paying all this money to HSCL in Tool, that's not correct either. All of the, almost all of their money goes to Athens Animal Shelter and Rescue. And we've had these discussions, but I'm more than happy to go through it again in the, in the public environment. But their money goes to that shelter. That shelter is a separate entity. It's got a different tax number. It's completely run separately. We, we do have the same board running both shelters, but the Henderson County funds go for that shelter. And you're right, they are properly, they are properly paying for that shelter.
Mr. Yawls, what was your question?
I had a question again about the rate. Again, from what your comments were a moment ago, the original amount being asked of Kaufman was 48,000 and what?
999.
And the, the negotiated rate is how much per month?
It's not negotiated. It's a concession, month to month.
Okay. The concession amount, what was that amount?
It's that. If you took...
I, I'm sorry, when you said it was that, that was me saying, I don't know what that is.
It's 49,999 divided by 12.
So, y'all didn't negotiate? Y'all didn't change the rate?
The original rate that was requested was about 58. Actually, it's less than that, but it's, it's close enough.
And then you lowered it.
On a concession, month to month, because we needed the decision from Gun Barrel City. So, we weren't willing to completely cut them off, especially when they were so close, and they also had a big bump. And Mr. Yaws, to address your question about the 50,000, I also joined the board in 2019. And one of my first meetings was right here, when we actually approached the council and said, "Your actual cost is 50,000 for the shelter. You've not paid that, you know, and that's why we're coming back." So, what has happened is, we did go, and in 2019, we did greatly reduce the rate, but we also had private citizens pay the bill for Gun Barrel City. So, imagine this, you're at a gas station, you're with your friends, you fill up your gas tank for 50 bucks, and your friends end up paying for 30 dollars. They chip in, and it's equivalent to you going back to that gas station and saying, "Listen, I only paid 20 bucks. I only paid 15 dollars the last time I filled up here. You know, I demand that I only pay 15 dollars, even though it's at the detriment of your business. That's kind of what you guys are asking us to do. You're asking us to take a way lower fee, even at the 29,000. We're still running at a deficit. We're losing, we're not, we're not a profit. We make absolutely no money from any of the animals. In fact, the board pays in more money than anybody else. We even have guaranteed, for Gun Barrel, you guys, we've asked about the 50,000. For us on the board, we're bringing in over 100,000. Our budget, that is for 2023, that we sat down with you guys on, a third of that budget, we're stepping up to pay for the longevity and to also try to get the animals adopted out, versus euthanizing.
So, you're running at a deficit. Can you explain to me why your 2020 taxes show you had a $346,000 carryover?
I would have to get with them on that, and with Teresa, our CPA, who's also on the board, who, yes, Mr. Yaws, we've offered for you guys to sit down with her, because she is the accountant. So, she is the one that's going to be better able to explain all of the different budgets and all of the different numbers.
Ms. Key, I believe you had some questions, or did they get answered?
I believe they've got an answer.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions?
I, I would like to ask a few questions. We, we have sort of been at this since June, over a differential here of an increase of $30,000. I commend the city on what they're doing in the new animal control officer. I think this is very good, but I think we also all agree that the city should not be in the animal shelter business per se. So, it's going to take cooperation, not only with us, but with you, other communities around this lake, in order to, I think, try to solve this problem. My position would be to provide the additional $30,000 to the animal care facility for FY2023. It does two things. It gives you the shortfall support that you need. It gives the city of Gun Barrel some time to sort through this, and if we want to come out with any kind of other compromise position with you all or with the surrounding communities to do so. We certainly, since June, have not made success, too much success on this and progress. So, that my position would be that we, we go one more year, work with you all, see how it goes, but at the same time, reserve the right in the city to work with our neighbors to see if there's a viable alternative. Right now, I don't see one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin?
I'm fine.
Ms. Evans?
Well, I'm not, I'm not for the city going into their animal control business now. If they want, if y'all want to work on it for next year, that'd be one thing, but just to drop this and say, "We're going to have a shelter," I just don't think we're ready for it.
Mr. Yawls, you have anything else?
I'm gonna stick to my point earlier, that the cost of this has gone up 800%, and during that same time that that cost has gone up 800%, we have decreased the number of animals that have gone over there substantially, and even this year, by over 50%. So, my question is, help me understand, because I do want to understand, how is it we have continually cut the number of animals going over there, but simultaneously, the price has increased to us? How is it costing more to service fewer animals keeps happening year over year, each year I've been with this council?
Yep. And the simple answer is, is you guys have gotten and also been lucky enough to have other people cover your portion for these years. So, this $50,000 number we've been talking about has been for over three years. And it's also, so, if you think about it, that 50,000, it hasn't really changed, and it takes into account also the inflation that we've all been facing. Now, with Kaufman County exiting, and I think, I don't think you were here for this meeting, for that meeting when we talked about Kaufman County exiting, but they were covering pretty much half of the budget for HSCL. So, everybody benefited from that, especially Gun Barrel City. Gun Barrel City was probably the one that benefited most from anybody else with Kaufman County. And now that they've left, we're all feeling it.
On the note of Kaufman moving over to North Texas Humane Society, what would you want us to understand is the reason why they've broken away from this, this Humane Society organization and moved over to the North Texas group? What was their chief reason cited as being?
Because they needed their own shelter, and being it right there and close to their ACO officers.
So, it had absolutely nothing to do with the cost?
No. In fact, they would be, in fact, they're paying more with their own shelter than they did, ever did with us. And unfortunately, going back to y'all's comment about, you know, responsible pet owners and the community taking responsibility, Kaufman County is also completely at capacity. Pretty much, once they opened their doors, they were also over capacity. And with, if there was something that we could do to get more responsible pet owners, I think somebody mentioned that in a previous meeting, that, I mean, that would be the perfect situation. And one of the things that we're doing at, at the shelters, at both shelters, is the spay and neuter program. So, any of the animals that are coming in, the goal is to get them spayed or neutered before they leave our facilities, because it's just, it's growing, it's growing rampant with, with people not being responsible.
Just for, just a point of clarity, clarity on that last comment, has it not always been the Humane Society's mission to have the animals spayed and neutered shortly after they're taken in?
It was. It was. But what we were doing then is, we were giving people vouchers to go to Friends of the Animals to get spayed and neutered. And what we found is not everybody, even though it was in the contract, even though what they signed off, that they were going to do this within three months, they still didn't do that. So, we've taken on the extra step, because we've got the surgery room, that we're now doing the spaying and the neutering. So, that way, before they leave our facilities, we're trying to get as many as we possibly can. So, that way, it's taking that extra step. We're not taking people for their word anymore, even if it's with a signed contract.
Question?
Yes.
Maybe the city manager, Jeff, about this. Of the animals that the, we're taking in through the animal control officer and getting adopted, are these animals being spayed and neutered?
No, they're not.
Okay.
And also, I, I'm just remembering that you weren't at the other meeting. Some of the other things that we talked about was the additional cost. We vaccinate all of the animals that come in. So, those vaccines and the medical costs have risen substantially, and we're still doing that. We're still offering microchipping. When an animal is lost, and they do have an owner, we do require rabies, for them to show the proof of rabies vaccination to claim the animals. So, if you're thinking about going independent and building your own shelter, we've said before, having another shelter would be a great asset for the community, because we are overrun. But these are also things that you would need to take into consideration, too, for, for cost, is the medical, the vaccines, the rabies, the microchipping, the spay neutering, all of that fun stuff.
I'd like one last question, just for the sake of the, of the room. If this, if this continues on at the current pace, what is the Humane Society's, I don't know the right word, is prognosis? Where is the endgame with this? Because what my concern continues to be is that this can go on in perpetuity to the point that, I mean, I don't think it'll happen, but it seems certainly possible now that we could be having a discussion about $100,000 a year, a year from now. And it's gotta reach a point where there's, we have to say something has to be done differently. Where is that endgame for Humane Society?
Well, once again, we've been talking about the $50,000, the same dollar amount for over three years.
But you say it's partly the main because of the inflation, and that wasn't three years ago, that was this year.
Yeah, but we're still absorbing a lot of that, even for Gun Barrel. I mean, the, the board is still bringing in over 100,000.
I apologize. My question may not have been clear. My question wasn't so much about the cost, it was more about what steps are being taken, what's, what would the Humane Society want to share with the community, is where y'all see this going? Because as one person, what I'm seeing is, this is spiraling out of control. That's the position that I hold. And I'm wondering, where does it stop? At what point do we reach a point and say, "We've reached the tipping point where we can't take, we can't control it anymore?" My perception is, we've already passed that point, and we're still pouring money into it. So, I'm wondering, what is the next step?
So, there's twofold to that. You know, you mentioned that it's a spiraling cost, it's been out of control, we keep increasing it, but the same number, 50,000, has been the exact same number that we have been talking for three and a half years. So, it's not spiraling out of control, it's just now, the private citizens that have stepped up, and, you know, even in this meeting, have taken on a portion of the Gun Barrel City bill. Nobody's standing up right now, offering tens of thousands of dollars to, to decrease the cost for Gun Barrel City like they have in the past. So, that's number one. The second thing is, we are doing the spaying and neutering. I mean, that is something, what we're trying to do with the controlling of the animal, animal population. The other thing that we might want to start thinking about, and this would be with the board, is maybe following the lead of what Waco just did, where they are mandating their residents to spay and neuter their animals. So, this might be something, you know, because we've talked about with the board since I've been on the board, you know, about a registration program for animals having to be registered. You know, that never happened. That was, you know, the, the council, and I'm not saying the people that are currently sitting here, but at least from three years ago, said, "Yes, we're, we're gonna do something. We're gonna do a registration program. We're gonna do something. You know, we just need to figure it out, because we don't have the resources." So, maybe the registration, I don't think, nobody really thinks that works, even with the Dallas Humane Societies that we've been talking to. Spaying and neutering seems to be the number one thing, and Waco is trailing, you know, blazing the trails, and it might be something that the current council looks at, and maybe putting some spay and neutering requirements with their, with their residents.
So, and I would say that y'all have dropped the ball on the spay and neutering by giving out vouchers and not making, not following up and making those were done. So, that's on y'all.
We didn't have a surgery center.
Do not interrupt me. I would also say that our $49,000 that you're asking for would be ill-spent for the mere fact that we do not see any results from the shelter. We still have the same number of animals. We have had y'all, we have had y'all refuse animals from us. Now, we are in a situation where our animal control officer's not even allowed to get out of her truck when she comes to your location. You do not take animals after 3:30. You do not quarantine animals. These are all additional expenses that we have, and I think this is a situation where council is frankly being misled. I would also say the $50,000, the, the $50,000 that you continually say that we should be, been paying all along, that is for your philosophy. That is not for humane service for animal control. That is for the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake philosophy, trying to be a no-kill shelter, failing, but trying to be a no-kill shelter. And so many things that we get complaints from staff members of taking an animal to the shelter, then going back the next day. No record of that dog being there. Dog's not there. The obvious answer is, that dog got euthanized and, you know, was gone. So, I'm not, and now you have a shelter that's closed because of disease, and you moved all the animals to the other shelter. That seemed like a high risk to me, but I'm not in the shelter business, so I don't know. Counsel, I will say this. For the $49,200 that they're asking for, we can build our own, we, well, first off, we can start with our, with the holding pens that we have. Ms. Jett has gone to Tractor Supply into Petsense. She's had dog food donated. By the way, y'all had dog food donated from Petsense, and y'all didn't come pick it up? That was odd to me as well. But you don't mind putting out blast, wanting more dog food. The, the pens can be set up. We've got shades on them now. They can be shed up, set up. She's had, I think, 20 of the igloo dog houses that were donated to us. She has a vet that is ready to take care of the, the necessary things that we would have to be done, at a cost of $100 an animal, at 100 dogs, that would be a $10,000 hit. I just believe that we, we have the person on board. I've visited with Ms. Jett and Mr. Williams, Chief Williams, and I'm confident that she could certainly take this endeavor and do well with it. And I think that if we build a, if we build a building, and we implement it as a shelter, and then in a couple of years, if something comes up and we're able to move into maybe the Kaufman Shelter, or Van Sant was talking about building a shelter, maybe we move into that, then we can still use this building for something else. But this would be $50,000 invested into our community. It'd be $50,000 invested into our infrastructure, rather than giving it to a group that is continually saying that we've been short paying them, which, you know, if we were paying for their philosophy, that would be one thing, but the citizens of Gun Barrel City have never come to us and said, "This is what they want." We've had citizens from other communities come and tell us, "This is what they want." We've had one or two from Gun Barrel City, but never came out in the masses. I know there are some citizens here today that firmly believe in Carol's ability. That's why they showed up with, with their pets. And I would ask that council decline this. Let's hold a special meeting and talk about how we move forward with opening up our own, own shelter.
Before, before that, I just want to address some of the, the information and the bullet points that you pointed out.
Right ahead.
So, when you mentioned, why were we not spaying and neutering before? It's because we just got the grant, and we just built the surgery center.
But you were giving, you were giving vouchers, correct?
Correct. But we did not have a surgery center. You cannot just go and clip and cut open a dog or a cat.
You didn't follow up with the Friends of the Animals and ask them if these people came in?
And that's why we know that a lot of the people that did not go and get their animals, you know, spayed and neutered. So, that is, is one thing, that we just now have got the surgery center that we're using. The second thing about Carol not being able to leave her truck, and this is, you know, I don't know if this is embarrassing, but this is when she came in, and there was a person that was adopting a dog, and she specifically said, "No, don't adopt those. I've got some." I've got some over here that you can grab. And we knew that they weren't vaccinated. We knew that they know anything. But it's like, you can't bring the animals to the shelter and to a potential adoptee and say, no, 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 come over here, I've got animals. So there's more to that. My turn to talk, I was respectful. Then you also brought up the philosophy, that you don't want to pay for the philosophy. Once again, you're not paying for the philosophy. The board is bringing $100,000, a third of the overall budget, to pay for our philosophy for trying not to be a kill shelter. Because you're right, we don't want to be a kill shelter. You and I have had a heart-to-heart, and I know, and Mayor Skanes expressed, you know, the board or the council does have love for animals. You guys have got your own personal animals. And what we said that we were not willing to do was to bring in animals except them only for three to 10 days and then euthanize them after, because we know it takes longer than that. So our philosophy, we're paying for our philosophy.
I have a question on that. What is it that you're doing with the euthanization drug that you have if you're a no-kill shelter?
We're not a no-kill shelter, unfortunately. Our goal is to get there. We euthanize as little as we can. Now, obviously, we have to for animals that are really sick or really aggressive, but for the rest that are perfectly fine animals that just need a home, no, we don't. We try not to kill them based out of no capacity at the shelter.
What percentage of animals are euthanized at y'all's facility?
I would have to look. I don't have that number right off at the top of my head.
The reason why I ask is the National for the Humane Society actually has a statistic of 10% or less is required. My question would be for this.
That's for a no-kill.
I understand. That was exactly my point. To be registered as a no-kill shelter, a facility has to maintain a 10% or less euthanization ratio. Do y'all know your euthanization ratio?
Yes.
Can I know it? Can I have that information?
And I believe it's also out on our website, too.
No, can I have it in this open meeting in front of the public?
I don't have it on me. I did not know that this was going to be the direction that we were going.
I understand. I just thought a no-kill shelter would know what their percentage of euthanization rate would be. The other two questions is regarding paying fair share, and Cindy, I think I've stepped over you. I'm sorry. Are you sure? I don't want to talk over you. I just realized I did that. And next question, if we're not paying our fair share, who's picking up the animals for Eustis, Log Cabin, Trinidad, and Malakoff? Are they, are y'all picking up covering services for those cities as well?
Let me grab my phone, because I've got the exact.
Please, go right ahead.
It's going to take a few minutes. I am not fast.
That's okay. I can go ahead and talk to it, and then when you catch up with that, we'll take it back to that point. The reason why I ask this is I've gotten the information that we've spoken to the city officials in those towns, and they're able to show us statistics that prove they're actually paying approximately $50 to $60 per animal as they are being turned over to y'all's facility, based on what their contracts are. And my question is, where the numbers are differing is what I'd like to understand better.
May I address that?
Please, yes, please. Your name?
Monica Allen.
Thank you, Monica.
The cost was raised to $95 as of July. Those cities have not brought any animals to us, or if they have, they have been charged $95 per animal since July. The $55 rate that you're speaking of was prior to July.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those numbers are also going up for those cities. That's what I just, what I said early on.
On that, and Graham, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's exactly where I wanted to go next. If those numbers are going up, and again, please don't, I'm not being glib, so I hope this doesn't come out that way. Was it just foreshadowing that y'all knew three years ago that it was going to go up, and y'all wanted us to pay that amount then because y'all knew what it was going to be in 2022? Because I've been told for three years, we've not been paid our fair share, and every year we talk about this same amount. And I'm curious as to how y'all knew, when I first came on the council three years ago, what it was going to be three years from now, today?
That $50,000 was the fair share back in 2019.
I agree. That's my point, is how did y'all know what it was going to be three years ago, that it is the same amount today in front of this council to vote to approve or not approve?
So we brought it to you guys 2019. We didn't bring you guys a budget for 2023 and 2019.
No, I'm saying the $50,000 amount. Y'all know that three years ago.
That is the same.
But it hasn't gone up?
So 2019, we've been talking about the Gun Barrel City fair share is $50,000. Now, we raised it just smaller than that because we had citizens, private citizens, that stepped up.
Yes, this part I'm absolutely clear on, and I apologize. My question is this. We've heard, and I agree, things have, the price of things have gone up, and I respect that. You have my undivided attention on that point. My question is, they're at a point now today where we're being told that it's going to cost $49,200 a year for a new contract starting November 1st of this year, 2022, in order to maintain what y'all are trying to, your methodology there. Did it cost that same amount in 2019? And there's been no inflation? Or there has been inflation?
There still is inflation.
So if that's the case, why were we being asked to pay $40,000 or $50,000 three years ago before the inflation took place? It can't be both ways. It can't be that it was $50,000 then, and it's $50,000 now because prices went up. That would mean that prices are neutral, as you pointed out. Private citizens picked up what y'all call our fair share along the way to compensate for the deficit. The price has not gone up then. It's exactly the same as it was in 2019 when I first had this, when we first had this discussion.
So to your point, and to, I think, the point with the slide deck, that the animals, the number of animals has been reduced.
Substantially, it's by over 50%.
Correct. So you've answered your own question.
Actually, that is not the answer. My question wasn't how many animals.
That is the answer. I mean, you're talking about, if we look at 2019 and what the animals you guys brought in now, or then versus the number of animals you guys bring in now, it's different. You guys brought in.
Let me make sure I understand this. For the number of animals we brought in in 2019, what we owed, based on what y'all have determined as our fair share, was approximately $50,000. We have successfully reduced that number by more than 50%, and three years later, our fair share remains $50,000. So what that means to me is, in the three years since we first discussed this, the prices of everything have exactly doubled. Everything. The price of the drugs that are used to vaccinate the dogs, the cost of spaying and neutering, which, by the way, I'm going to pause on that. Were y'all paying for spay or neutering that wasn't actually happening? Because if not, then there shouldn't be an expense that cost.
There was not a cost.
There shouldn't be an expense accrued, because if they didn't get spayed or neutered, there shouldn't have been a payment made. So that's where I'm at. I'm lost as to how did the price stay exactly the same for three years, and now we're told it's actually higher? No, it's exactly what it was then.
It is exactly what it was then, too, because if you take into consideration the number of animals, and not only was the private citizens stepping in, but the county of Kaufman was covering a majority of everybody's bill.
They're still paying the same amount. They're paying more.
They're paying more because they've got their own shelter.
I understand.
So they don't bring, the county of Kaufman does not bring their animals to us.
So the reality is, I'm understanding it, is that our fair share is more or less in response to the fact that Kaufman has taken their business elsewhere. Had they not taken their business elsewhere, our fair share would be less?
Your fair share would still be $50,000, you know, and once again, that's still working at a detriment. That is still not paying for, if you think about all the fixed costs. I mean, you're a smart guy. I know you're instigating and wanting to get into the details and trying to twist things. But no, you're smart. I get that.
Hold on a minute. Hold on. I want to say this. I view that comment as being charged, and I don't understand. We're here to try and understand how we're going to spend the citizens' taxpayers' money, and your insinuation that I'm trying to instigate something is not, no, I'm going to finish.
You're twisting it.
I'm sorry, ma'am. It's not helpful. We're supposed to be working together like responsible citizens. When y'all turn loose of an animal with somebody, and they're supposed to get it spayed and neutered, the responsible person goes and gets that done. When we turn loose of an animal, and we do make sure that they get their vaccinations, when they do get that done, and somebody says that that's not happening, that's not being responsible. That's actually creating a problem in my mind. I think we should stick to the facts. That's where I want to keep this discussion. There's no room in this discussion for talking about somebody instigating something. That's not what this is.
And we did do a sit-down with the mayor and with Jeff to go through the actual budget and show where all of the money is coming in from and where all of the expenses are.
Actually, it was a P and L statement that you showed us, and it did not give us the information that we were hoping to get, which was exactly that. Where is all the money going? Where is it coming from? We know where it's coming from, but we did not have a breakdown of where the money was going to.
Yes, it was in there.
No, ma'am, it wasn't. I do have a question, if you don't mind, because I remembered that the email that I received from Ms. Amsworth, who is the president of your board?
Yes.
And I won't read the whole email, because council has already read it. But basically, she has said that because we didn't meet the deadline in August, y'all no longer want to do business with us anyway.
We did not say that.
He said, we do not have plans.
Send the email to the council.
Excuse me. We do not have plans to accept any animals from Gun Barrel City starting November 1st, 2022. So that tells me that you're not interested in taking our animals anyway. So I'm kind of curious why we're even going through this tonight.
That, I mean, if you guys are not wanting to sign with HSCCL, and what Lynette was saying, is that since we've not heard anything from you guys after the July meeting, the sit-down in August, the August meeting, the September reminder email of, hey, what's going on? We need to make cuts on our end or make adjustments such as staffing and all of that. We didn't hear back from anybody. It was crickets. So we had to make a decision for November 1st, based on the assumption that you guys were not going to be coming back to us, that we needed to make adjustments. And we were very upfront with that, even when we met with you guys, that we're going to have to adjust the goals and how we operate at HSCCL.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And I will say that our contract ends October 31st, and that is when we have the time to make a decision to renew or not renew.
Absolutely.
You know, so, Mr. Gals.
Was Cindy trying to?
Yes. Cindy, you want to ask a question?
I have a question.
I was just trying to clarify. You said that the information about the euthanization was available on your website?
Yes.
Where?
If you go into the About section, we should have a PDF. And I don't know if the latest is out there, but we do keep, because for some of the grants, prior year, yeah. So it's 2021 numbers. And we put that out there because some of the grants that we try to go for require to see our EU rates.
Yeah, I see nothing.
Does your website still list that y'all are a no-kill shelter?
We've never listed ourselves as a no-kill shelter.
Well, I'll just say, I don't think Gun Barrel City can take care of the animals right now. I mean, y'all seem to want to build your own shelter, and that's okay. But as of today, I don't think we can actually take care of them, the ones she picks up. And my thing, I know, but if we have winter like we did last year, who is going to keep those dogs warm? I know that's, I mean, I know that's really childish thinking, but my dogs are warm. I want all the dogs warm. And I've been over at their shelter, and I'm not saying they're toasty warm, but they've got, they're cared for. And I don't think we can do that right now for $50,000. That's just my thinking.
They're going to take more than that.
Yeah, I know it will. And I'm talking about, she just said, I mean, he just said that we do not spay and neuter the animals when we give them out. We don't follow up on the people. I think it's good. And yes, I know the cost of spaying and neuter and vaccinations every year. I do know that cost.
I have a question.
$50,000, I'm just.
$100,000, $10,000 for the.
Go ahead, Gary.
I have a question. As I sit here and listen to all this, is it possible for you to adopt perhaps a different model? We've talked a lot about reducing the amount of animals that we take to you. Is it feasible to look at a fixed cost model and then look at the animals that we bring to you, which would be on a variable basis? So where we could pay a fixed cost, and then when there is a number of animals coming to you, which requires spay and neuter, an additional variable cost, that we could somehow come at it from that perspective?
I won't say it's completely out of the realm of possibilities, but I will say that when it comes to paying per animal in any capacity, there are staffing, and there's things that we have to have that we cannot do on a variable cost based on animals coming in.
So that would be part of your fixed cost, right? But the other costs that were mentioned, there are variable costs there as well, correct?
The variable cost would be things such as the medicine, dog food, you know, some of the supplies, so that's pretty.
Spaying, neutering, and so forth, yeah. I'm just trying to think where we could come to a compromise, and I think that may be an approach that we may want to consider if you're willing to do that.
I would have to take anything back to the board, to our board, for voting. I can tell you right now that, you know, we have started making changes without Gun Barrel City, just because we've not heard anything, to change the way that we operate. So if Gun Barrel City does decide to stay with us, you know, we would have to look at things about, like, restaffing back up for the people that have just recently left that we weren't going to do, so things like that. So going to a fixed slash variable cost, I could just, we're even disagreeing on, our records show 125, mayor's records show 99. We're not even agreeing on that part. You know, if there was a better relationship with all of us, but I'd say, since I've been on the board for the last three and a half years, it's been quite contentious. I mean, even tonight, I feel like I'm on a jury or on the stand, you know, committed murder and defending my life. You know, so I know that seems like exaggerated, but every time that we come and have had meetings, it's very contentious. We've tried to bridge the gap with that. I even gave Jeff and Mayor Skanes a hug on the way out when we left from the budget meeting, saying our goals are just different. You know, when we were asked if we could kill, you know, animals at a shorter period versus trying to get them adopted out, you know, we were very firm.
You would not ask that. That was my, that was my thought, but I did not ask y'all to do that.
Okay, and so when that thought came up, and we just made it clear that we're a volunteer board, you know, even the volunteers, not only are we not getting paid, we're paying into the shelters. So it's, if we had to become more of a kill shelter, that's not anything that any of us on the board unanimously would support.
Mr. City Manager, are you having a comment? Close.
No, I just, I've always asked the simple question that, you know, Mr. LaRue brings up. You won't and cannot come up with a fixed cost for us, but every other city in the county you have a fixed cost for. I just don't understand. I'm a simple-minded person. I'm responsible to the council to provide them with good, accurate data. I can't explain why we pay $250 an animal when Log Cabin and Trinidad and Malakoff and Eustis and Kearns pay 95. All I've asked and I suggested, get all of us in the same room together, and let's come up with a cost that we can all agree to. I don't understand why, business-wise, that is discouraged by your board.
It's not discouraged.
I just do not see.
You even said it would be a great idea to pull everybody together.
And I've asked, if there, if our fair share is $250 an animal.
But it's not, and we went through that.
Well, the fair share for all those other cities I just mentioned should be the same as our fair share, and they're not paying that. So who's supplementing them? Is it us?
No, right now, it's still the board. And no, and that's also the number that said that we are going back to those to raise those up to the 150.
That's been my concern and question from day one, is let's put this on a fair slate. Why is our share as a city greater than every other person that brings animals to your shelter? That's just a simple question that I've never received an answer to.
I've even addressed that tonight, that you guys pay about 150 per animal, even looking at the numbers.
Can I interrupt? That would be, if we're all in the mindset of trying to reach a consensus and reach a middle ground that we can all understand and live with, can we just talk about that one sentence you just said? Y'all are thinking about raising it, but there are other cities to your, and again, I'm just taking what you said, because I value the information you're sharing. You've let us know that there are other cities that are paying $95, and they're under contract right now.
There's no contract. They have brought us literally two digits of animals.
Per year.
For one year. They have brought us less than 50 animals, maybe less than 20 animals.
And what are they being charged per animal? Thank you.
If I can finish.
I'm sorry.
Gunbarrel brought us 323 animals in 2021, and you paid $19,200. You paid $57 an animal to the Humane Society in 2021. That is not much different than the other cities that paid $55 an animal, but only brought in a very small number. So what is the second question?
So let's take what you just said, because I want to keep this on the same beat, okay? So we, I'm sorry, am I boring you? This is important to me.
Bringing the number, bringing the number to 49,000.
I believe what you're hearing is you don't understand the question, and your frustration is with me, because I do understand the question. I apologize that I understand it better, but it's very clear to me.
Please ask the question.
That's what I'm doing. We pay 19,200. You mentioned how much that was per animal.
Yep.
We're going to go from that to 49,200, is what y'all are asking.
Which will take it to $150 an animal.
But we're decreasing the number of animals by double digits. We've decreased by 50...
In the last two months, in the last two months alone.
Well, no, for this year. Because we had four months that we didn't have an animal control officer, and we brought you zero animals. So yes, it's been all year. We've decreased by half. How is it it's going to go up to 49,000 when we've cut the number by 50%? And you were saying we're paying this much before. We're bringing fewer animals to you by 50%, but the price is going to go from 20,000 to 50,000. I can't square that math. That's, that is where my frustration lies, is I'm trying to find a way to make this math work. I can't make this work.
Yeah, and I get that it's difficult to do the math, especially...
Well, it's not difficult, it's math. It's just math. It's not rocket science.
Well, what you're looking at is, in 2019, the cost to you was $57 an animal, but that was not the cost for that animal, to bring that animal in, to do the vaccines, to do everything, and the care for that animal. So the care for the animal never costed $57. It did not cost that in 2019. The number has always been higher, but Gunbarrel has been extremely lucky all these years that you've not had to pay the cost of what an animal costs to take in and to take care of and get at least processed. So I get where the confusion is, because I know, once again, if I only paid $50, and if other, you know, however it was, that was my cost, even though it cost the gas station $50 extra dollars.
I'm not comparing it to the gas station, I'm comparing it to the other cities around the lake. We've talked to their city managers, and we know what they're paying, and it's around that same rate that you just said.
Yeah, they're at 95.
So it's not, again, it's not a comparison to a gas station, it's a comparison to what an animal from another city and what they're paying for y'all to do the exact same service. That's the literal apple-to-apple comparison we're doing. It isn't complicated, it's actually very simple.
I think that the one piece that you're also missing is, the last time I was up here getting grilled or getting questioned, was what we said with Kaufman County leaving and taking 50% of the budget, and then with the increase for staffing and for medical, which is 80% of our budget, that that was before we could even think about staying as an intake shelter. We needed commitment from you guys, also from Kaufman City, the city of Kaufman, to see if we could get a third, approximately a third, of it covered. And then if Gunbarrel City was on board and City of Kaufman was on board, that we were also going back to the smaller towns to get that back up to 150. So that might be one of the missing links to this puzzle, because I don't think you were there at that meeting. So with, so that's kind of where all of this kind of came from, is when we started back in July, you know, kind of explaining, you know, what was going on with the county of Kaufman, and them exiting and taking 50% of the budget with them, and with all the inflation, where it's left the shelter.
Mr. Mayor? There's been a lot of numbers that have been thrown around, and I just went through the report from Ms. Jett. We averaged this year, for the six months that we brought animals over, not counting the months that we didn't bring any over, just the six months that we did, we averaged 12.6 dogs to coming over to your shelter. If you multiply that number times 12, you end up with 152 dogs, and if you divide 152 into your $49,200, we're going to end up paying $323.68. I see you shaking your head. Ms. Jett is writing a government document. She cannot be wrong. It is checked by her, by the chief of police and by the city manager.
That document is probably 2021, if that was the one that she just brought up.
I'm looking at the numbers for this year, after we have done the work that we have done.
Got it.
And after we have made the efforts that we have gone to, I'm looking at the real numbers. I'm not looking back at last year before we had Ms. Jett doing what she does, who does a very good job. So I'm in agreement with Mr. Yaws and the rest of council here, that we just, you know, y'all have tried several years to convince us that we don't pay our same share, our fair share. Our fair share went from $5,000 to now $49,200. I thank you, ladies, if y'all want to have a seat. I'll leave it to Mr. Yaws if he wants to amend his motion. Oh, Mr. Foster, do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think what I said originally has been strongly enforced here tonight, is that there's a great diversity of numbers, there's a great diversity of opinion, there's a lot of opportunity to work with our surrounding communities on this. But we're talking here roughly going from 19,000 to 49,000. $30,000, that's not going to break the city. If we want to go ahead and build a building, we can do so, we can take this action as well. And I think we need to move forward, provide the Humane Society the money they're asking for, let's put this behind us, see if we can work together, see where we go. But at least let's buy some time to let us all make some rational decisions, rather than emotional questions and answers, so to speak, in a meeting like this. It's not, this, I think, is a good opening and airing, but we definitely need to buy some time, and that's what we're buying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you again to the guests for their answers to the questions. I think I would like to amend my motion to table this. I don't know if that's an option, but I'll tell you, at the end of the day, I don't feel like I could vote to pay this amount of money to the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake.
What is your...
Well, if we're not going to pay it, then let's just get it off the table. We've been dealing with this since July, and it's the same thing over and over and over. They need an answer.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I think the answer to the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake, in my opinion, is a resounding no. And it comes down to this. The taxpayers, the citizens of Gunbarrel City, have empowered the five of us and the mayor on this council to be custodians of their money. And in my opinion, for three years, I've been asking questions, and I've been told for three years, don't believe the math you have in front of you. Don't believe everything anybody else tells you, trust only us. I was out at the state fair this past weekend. I had every manner of credit card offer, putting, people want to put siding and windows on my house, and you know what? I walked past those deals too, because I don't think they were what I needed. I don't think they were what I wanted. And I got to tell you, I feel a lot, I feel very similar to that right now, where I'm being told over and over and over, disregard math, ignore everything you've been told by everybody but us. And that's not, I'm going to tell you right now, if somebody came to our EDC, and people do all the time, and requested public money to start a business or to enhance their business, the word grilling was used during this discussion tonight. This is not a grilling, this is question and answers regarding public money. If it's viewed as a grilling, then probably we're doing business with the wrong people.
Well, we may do it.
I'm going to finish, I'm sorry. The people who come to the EDC to either request a grant or a loan, if you want to use the word grilling, they have to go through a grilling, because that's, it's public money. Questions need to be answered, understandings need to be made, and we, as a voting body, have to know that we're spending the public's money wisely. And at the end of the day, being told that I can't trust math, I got to tell you, that's the very first time I stopped listening to somebody.
Well, then make the motion not to pay it, because we've been doing this since July, and it's the same thing. And we've wasted an hour and a half, just over and over.
Well, with all due respect, ma'am, I wouldn't call it a waste of time. This has been an effort to try and understand what we're doing for the sake of the community and for the sake of animals who depend on us to do the right thing. I wouldn't characterize it as a waste of time.
Mr. Yaws, would you go ahead and make your motion, please?
I'm not sure how to make the motion, Mr. Mayor. We table it, or are we just voting it down? Because that's what I would like to do.
Then make the motion.
Then make a motion, vote it down, if that's what you want to do.
All right, I make a motion to discuss and/or take action to consider an increase in animal control costs from 19,200 to 49,200 annually, as requested by the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Make a motion to discuss and/or take action to...
Do you want to turn it down, or do you want to table it?
I want to turn it down.
Then make a motion to turn it down.
I would make a motion to discuss and/or take action to consider declining an animal control cost from 19,200 to 49,200 annually, as requested by Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Key, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vote from my right?
No.
Key, no.
LaRue, no.
Art, the no vote.
Is a no vote a decline? Are we making sure we know what we're voting on?
Yeah, really.
Is that right, Richard?
As I'm understanding, a no means you want to move forward with the discussion. A yes is to decline.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They didn't understand it that way.
Motion, I'll clarify the motion. The motion was to decline the engagement with the Animal Control, the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. Vote from my right, please.
So to define, decline discussion, decline...
Decline the contract offer.
Decline it.
So, yes, we decline?
Yes, we decline it.
Okay.
Yes, we decline, no, we go forward with approval?
No, we would have to have another motion.
Well, let's vote no.
Key, yes, decline.
Thank you. Mr. LaRue? Ms. Evans?
I'm voting to pay them, whatever the vote is.
That would be enough. Mr. Yaws?
I vote to decline the offer.
Thank you. Motion carries to decline the payment.
All right, then that's...
Item 2C, discuss and/or take action, consider approving the latest proposal from North Texas Fiber. Mr. City Manager?
We've had discussions with the representatives of North Texas Fiber. They presented their proposal at a workshop. We have had some executive session discussions regarding their proposals and the percentage of franchise fees paid to the city. I reached out to representatives of North Texas Fiber and conveyed that information to them, which was that the city council collectively were leaning towards the 5% franchise fee, which is the maximum amount allowed by FCC regulations, but that is the amount that we receive for other franchises in the city. I sent that information to the representatives of North Texas Fiber. I, in return, got the contract proposal that you've all been provided, which was a 1% franchise fee for any homes less than 85% penetration. Once it got to 85% penetration, it would go up to 1.5%. The concerns I have with, there's no price point, so we really don't know the numbers without a price point. We receive annually from our franchise fees in cable television, which includes most of the internet, approximately $50,000 in franchise fees. And I think we have to be careful as a city that we don't just arbitrarily give up that franchise money. If, for example, North Texas Fiber went into 85% of our homes, but the franchise fee only amounted to $20,000, those 85% of homes would no longer contract with the current providers we have, so therefore, we would not receive those franchise fees from those providers. So I provided that to city council, I expressed your concerns to them in an email, and what you were provided in your packet was the result of that communication.
Discussion?
Mayor, I reviewed this pretty carefully and do have a few comments. I think one of the things that's not mentioned in this proposal is the advent of video streaming. This is becoming the real norm for videos, movies and things like this, and that has diminished revenues to local governments that collect from cable video franchise fees nationwide. In fact, Netflix, Hulu, and others are in, may be ring sued now by various communities over the definition of what the franchise fee is. I just think we need to be very careful here that we don't create a multimillion-dollar problem for an innovative business. I agree that the 1% is too low. I think that it definitely should be 5. I would like to see from them a definition of what video service, what is their definition? How will video streaming be defined in this contract? Familiarize themselves with the Texas Utilities Code in this issue and the city charter. So given this, I think we need a more detailed work plan. I would favor tabling this and tell, and let them come back with some revisions to see if we can really work with this plan or not, but the way it's written, I could not support it.
How about if we make a motion to continue discussions with North Texas Fiber and look for other alternatives as well?
Second.
Take a motion and a second to continue discussion with North Texas Fiber. Any further discussion?
Ms. Mayor, I've asked our city manager if, tonight after this meeting, if we could ask that he engage with North Texas Fiber again and have them meet with the full council in a workshop setting. Mr. Foster, would that be in keeping with what you're describing?
I think so.
I think that'd be great.
I think that's what is needed, because at this point, just as you pointed out, or the city manager pointed out, 1% or 1.5%, number one, it's a percentage of a number that we don't know. We have absolutely no idea what it even looks like. And secondly, 5% is what the cap is. The research that I've done shows that 5% is, I can't find any place that's less than 5%. So I think this is, just as Mr. Foster pointed out, this is a new business that's venturing into consumer internet, and I think they see an opportunity that we need to straighten it out on and make sure that we're in the right.
Video streaming is going to really impact this industry.
And if I can just add one thing, I did considerable research, because after speaking with the representatives, you know, the number 1% and 1.5% was told to me that that's the industry standard. I did considerable research, I can't find those numbers anywhere. I have looked and looked and looked on the internet, trying to find contracts with other cities, with cable providers, internet providers, and if it's the industry standard, it should be somewhere. Unable to locate those numbers in any venue.
Another thing missing in this contract is an escape clause for the city. If Texas Fiber does not perform, how do we get out of it? There's no mention of that anywhere in this contract. We don't want anything that we're obligated to, in perpetuity. Quite honestly, I would suspect if a contract like this were given, we would see Optimum and others jump in very quickly with fiber options to compete.
And just to answer that question, we have a prohibition in our charter that allows for franchises to not exceed 20 years in length.
That's right.
So that would be a limitation on that. And there's also no performance standard in this contract that we would have to adhere to. They could provide substandard performance, eliminate our other providers, and then we get people that don't even want the service anyways. So I think there's a lot of things to consider, so.
Thank you. And is there anyone who has a disagreement with us holding a workshop?
No.
Then may we vote from my left, please?
Yaws, yes, to tabling?
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. If the city secretary would get with city manager to work up a workshop for that, and also a special meeting for the previous item. And council, if y'all would give it to the city secretary before you leave tonight and give her your availability, so we can get those two meetings underway. Item 2D, discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-017, recognizing the week of November 7th through the 11th as municipal court week. Judge Wallace, would you please take the mic?
Hello.
So basically, the state of Texas has acknowledged the municipal court week as November 7th through the 11th of this year. And basically, in order to commemorate that, I have implemented some public outreach for each day that week. On Monday, I'm doing a Monday Mania, which basically means that I'm allowing the public to come in and basically take a tour of the court, kind of learn the process of how we do things for classy cases. On Tuesdays, Traffic Tuesday, we'll have a display of traffic signs and their meanings, road trips, road tips, et cetera. Wednesday, Warrantless Wednesday, I'm going to allow the public, if they have an active warrant, to come in and try to handle that, and then if they do, then I'll waive warrant fees. Thursday, I'm calling it Thirsty Thursday. Basically, it's, if you're thirsty, don't drink and drive, join in on the mads, tie one on for safety campaign. What that is, is when they come into the court, I'll hand them a red ribbon, and they can tie that on to their car and join in on their campaign, which is basically displaying the red ribbon on your car to remind everyone that drinking and driving do not mix. And on Friday, it's Fabulous Friday. Basically, what I'm going to do is present court personnel some goodies, just an appreciation of all the hard work that we do. We do see the public and actually see more people than other courts do. So, that's basically it.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Judge Wallace?
Not a question, but a comment that I really wish we would have moved this up closer to the top of the agenda for your sake.
Oh, yes, definitely.
This is just a joke, but...
It'd be nice.
Will there be any speeding tickets dismissed? I just asked.
City Secretary, you got the resolution for me to read? Okay. Here we go. You got it? Thank you. Resolution Number R 2022-017, a resolution recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-017?
Make a motion to discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-017, recognizing the week of November 7th through the 11th as Municipal Court Week.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
Vote from my left? Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Item 2E, discuss and/or take action to move the November 22nd, 2022 city council meeting to November 15th, 2022, due to the holidays. May I have a motion?
Making a motion to take action, move the November 22nd, 2022 city council meeting to November 15th, 2022, due to the holidays.
Second.
Motion and a second, vote from my left?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Item 2F, discuss and/or take action to move December 27th, 2022 city council meeting to December 20th, 2022, due to the holidays. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the December 27th, 2022 city council meeting to December 20th, 2022, due to the holidays.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Vote from my left?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Item 2G, discuss and/or take action to adopt Ordinance Number O 2022-021, amending Ordinance Number O 2022-018, which adopted the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget to increase the 2022 fund balance and expenditures by one hundred thousand, and move the additional 2021-2022 fund balance of one hundred and twenty thousand to the Capital Improvement Fund account for the purchase of three half-ton pickup trucks. May I have a motion, please? Oh, let me read the ordinance first, how about that? Ordinance O 2022-021, an ordinance of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, amending Ordinance O 2022-018, which adopted the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget so as to increase the 2022 fund balance and expenditures by one hundred thousand dollars, and move an additional 2021-2022 fund balance of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the Capital Improvement Fund account, bringing the total 2022-2023 fiscal year budget to five million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars, and to allocate those funds into various city departments and to provide an effective date. Now may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss and/or take action to adopt Ordinance Number O 2022-021, amending Ordinance Number O 2022-018, which adopted the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget to increase the 2022 fund balance and expenditures by a hundred thousand, and move the additional 2021-2022 fund balance of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the Capital Improvement Fund account for the purchase of three half-ton pickup trucks.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Question, the city manager, is this what we discussed at the planning meeting the other day?
Yes, sir. This is the result of those two items that were in the 2021-2022 budget were not fulfilled due to the inability to perform those projects with the funding that was provided.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Vote from my left?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Section 3, Planning and Zoning, 3A, public hearing on a request to replant lots 3 through 22 and 25 through 35, creating eight lots, lots 3R, 6R, 9R, 12R, 15R, 17R, 19R, and 21R in the SunDrift subdivision belonging to MRJ Ventures ILP. Public hearing is open, is anyone here to speak on that behalf? Public hearing is now closed. Item 3B, discuss and/or take action, consider approving the replating of lots 3 through 22 and 25 through 35, creating eight lots, lots 3R, 6R, 9R, 12R, 15R, 17R, 19R, and 21R in the SunDrift subdivision belonging to MRJ Ventures ILP. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss and/or take action to consider approving the replating of lots 3 through 22 and 25 through 35, creating eight lots, lots 3R, 6R, 9R, 12R, 15R, 17R, 19R, and 21R in the SunDrift subdivision belonging to MRJ Ventures ILP.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, I will, in case council's not aware, I'm sure you probably already are, but for the audience, this is in the SunDrift subdivision, which is in our ETJ, so. Any discussion? There are no discussion, vote from my left?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Moving right along. Item 3C, discuss and/or take action, consider adopting Ordinance Number O 2022-020, amending Section 156 dot 038, the Recreational Vehicle Park District. Ordinance Number O 2022-020, an ordinance of the city council for the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, amending Section 156 dot 038, Recreational Vehicle Park District, RVP 1, of the Gunbarrel City Code of Ordinances, providing for a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, and providing an effective date. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss and/or take action to consider adopting Ordinance Number O 2022-020, amending Section 156 dot 038, Recreational Vehicle Park District, RVP 1.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I want to thank staff for putting this together, these changes together. I know a lot of work and a lot of effort went into doing that, I do appreciate it. Hearing no discussion? Vote from my left?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Item 4A, public hearing to discuss EDC 2022-2023 fiscal year budget. Public hearing is now open, is anyone wish to discuss? Public hearing is now closed. Item 4B, discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-016, approving the EDC's 2022-2023 fiscal year budget. Resolution Number R 2022-016, a resolution of the city council, the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, approving the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget of the Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R-2022-016, approving the EDC's 2022-2023 fiscal year budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd like to point out that I was pleased to see money in your budget to increase the signage for the city park. I think it's well needed, thank you.
Could we have a minute for the EDC director to maybe give us some highlights of the budget in terms of what they propose to accomplish?
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any specific questions, or just want me to kind of do a review?
You're on your own.
Okay. We did have some budgeted funds for signage in our last year's budget that we didn't use, so we're very excited to continue and bring that forward and get with Tech dot for some good locations for indicating where people can turn into our park on both 198 and 334. And we also want to have signage at the park I would like to have, but we have like the welcome to the Gunbarrel City, that type of signage, right at the corner where you turn on municipal, that people like to take their picture with that logo and be right there and off the highway. It'd be really nice. I also think that we have a lot of funds in reserves. We don't need to have three years of operating costs in reserves, so I wanted to move some of those funds and do some infrastructure projects. And one of them is putting in a circle drive at the north end of Heritage Parkway, so that it's not a dead-end street. People can turn down there, circle around, come back, and it just increases the value of that commercial property along that road. And it makes it easier for people coming into town with their boat on their trailer, they can still access all of those things down there in an easy way. Then we want to increase the amount that we can put into new business incentives. I've had several businesses approach me recently about wanting to expand and improve their local businesses for our citizens. There's some really great projects in the works, so we're excited about those. We completed the incentive we had with Elder Dodge, that was a hundred thousand a year, so we're glad to have that money to reinvest in other areas of the community this coming year.
That was a five-year commitment?
Yes, it was. Yeah, does anybody have any questions for me?
You mentioned Heritage Parkway. Am I mistaken, or did I read something that you were going to take it out to Harbor Drive?
There has been talk with the school board about putting in a road from Harbor Point over to that north end of Heritage Parkway. They've not worked with us on that, but the school board does have a desire to do that. They have the option to put in a drive on their own property, but in the long run, what we'd ideally like to have is a public street.
There's been some discussion with council about the elementary school there, so I just wondered if it was all coordinated?
Not yet, but there's definitely talks in the works about that. Even so, the circle drive would give them the option to drop up, to come in, circle around, drop off their kid, and head back out. It's still a great option for that into the road.
Somehow we could figure out the kid pick up in the afternoon about 3:30 that blocks off all the two lanes of the, one lane of the road on its way.
Yeah.
It's really a problem there. We're just an accident there waiting to happen.
Yeah.
Mr. Foster, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the city manager has been working with the school board, the superintendent of the schools, on that very issue of handling the drop-off and pickup of the children at the school. And I look forward to them coming to a conclusion on that and seeing where we're going to end up.
Just to give an update where we're at?
It's not on, it's not on the agenda right now, so let's stay with the budget if we could.
So you talked about a photo opportunity, kind of a situation out at the park. You got any ideas yet, or you're still kind of spitballing that?
We're still spitballing, yeah. We've got, we've got some options that we can copy, current signage, which I actually like, you know, being consistent with it, welcome to Gunbarrel City signage. We'd probably need to put one of those right here next to where Pier 334 is going to go in. We're expecting a nice press release on that soon and an update. They're still saying they're planning to break ground in January or February of this next year, which is fast approaching.
I don't know what it is, it's been going through my mind of, I'm thinking about, and again, I'm not trying to compare us with these international cities, but why not? You know, it's only money.
Exactly.
But like Las Vegas has some iconography there that everybody knows their welcome, and I have a family member that's on a cruise this week, and they're behind that huge rotan sign, and again, I don't think that's who we are, but we definitely have that identity that I know people want, and...
Yes.
I think now's the time to do it, so I'm glad to hear that you're working on that. That's great.
Having some consistency in our, in our, how we're represented is going to be good for our city and just helps it look better.
Council, have any other questions on the budget? Hearing none, vote from my left, please?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sora, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Second reading of Resolution Number R 2022-014, approving a renovation grant and performance agreement with NAPs Property Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Resolution Number R 2022-014, a resolution of the city council, the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, approving a renovation grant program and performance agreement by and between the Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation and NAPs Properties Incorporated, a Texas corporation for improvements to property generally located at 300 North Gunbarrel Lane, Gunbarrel City, Texas, and providing for an immediate effective date. Item 4D, discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-014, approving a renovation grant and performance agreement to NAPs Properties Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Ms. City Secretary, do you know if I need to read this again that I just read? I'm sorry? Okay, great. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-014, approving a renovation grant and performance agreement to NAPs Properties Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Motion and a second across the board. Discussion?
Could we get the EDC director to give us a brief overview of what this is all about?
I'm quite certain of it.
Yes, there are two resolutions for NAPs Properties, because he's got two locations. One is where there is a mattress store, box drop, I think, mattresses, and then a bail bonds location, it used to be GBC Pharmacy, that's one of his businesses. And then across the street from it, also on 198, there is a daycare school center and roofing company and a salon. So those two businesses are the two properties in mind, and he's had some issues with leaking in the roofing, so he's resealing the roof with a product that has, I believe, a five-year guarantee, and it's white, so it's more reflective to be more efficient for heating and cooling as well.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. You might as well, okay, yeah. Vote from my left, please?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Second reading of Resolution Number R 2022-015, approving a renovation grant and performance agreement to NAPs Properties Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. R 2022-015, a resolution of the city council, the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, approving a renovation grant program and performance agreement by and between the Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation and NAPs Properties Incorporated, a Texas corporation for improvements to property generally located at 240 North Gunbarrel Lane, Gunbarrel City, Texas, and providing for an immediate effective date. Item 4F, discussion or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-015, approving a renovation grant and performance agreement to NAPs Properties Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2022-015, approving a renovation grant, performance agreement to NAPs Properties, Inc., in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-six point seven seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is this related to what you just told us about, is all, why were there, why does it require two resolutions? Okay, thank you. So they're different, okay, got it.
Any further questions, discussion? Vote from my left, please?
Yawes, yes.
Evans, yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Thank you. Item 4G, first reading of Resolution Number R 2022-018, approving a renovation grant and performance agreement to DBL-J Properties and CCLLC located at 210 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Resolution Number R 2022-018, a resolution of the city council, the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, approving a renovation grant program and performance agreement by and between the Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation and double J Properties at Cedar Creek LLC, a Texas limited liability company for improvements to property generally located at 210 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, and providing for an immediate effective date. Item 4H, discuss and/or take action to approve the proposed EDC lease agreement for the property known as 1720 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, AKA Gunbarrel City EDC office and EDC conference room. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss and/or take action to approve the proposed EDC lease agreement for the property known as 1720 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, AKA agreement for the property known as 1720 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas, AKA GBC EDC office and EDC conference room.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Did anything change on the lease agreement, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir. Just the dates.
All right. Any discussion? Vote from my left. Y'all's yes.
Evan's yes.
LaRue, yes.
Key, yes.
Foster, yes.
Did we get the leak fixed, or do we know? Don't know, it hadn't rained yet.
With all the rain we got, she'd know if it wasn't fixed.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to know, isn't it? Item 4I, discuss and/or take action to approve a no-cost lease agreement with the city of Gunbarrel City as related to the property having a legal description of Acres 8.101, AB 794, GT Walter Sir, Mid-Cities Properties, Block B, Lots 5 and 6, and N/PT of Lot 7. Motion, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss and/or take action to approve a no-cost lease agreement with the city of Gunbarrel City as related to the property having a legal description of Acres 8.101, AB 794, GT Walter Sir, Mid-Cities Property, Prop Block B, Lots 5, 6, and N/PT of Lot 7.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
I looked this up, and I was pleased to see that this is actually where the lawnmower racetrack is.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the EDC actually owns the land that the racetrack is on, and it was bought many, many years ago for a very high price, as a matter of fact. So we were probably going to be stuck with it until we get ready, until they get ready to take a loss on it, I think, so.
Meaning NASCAR?
Yeah, maybe put NASCAR on it. Any discussion? Vote from my left, please. Y'all's yes.
Evan's yes.
LaRue, yes.